Welcome to our first night meeting here in a little bit of upgrade facility. Just to, Commissioner Taylor will be here tonight, he's got some family, has a little patient emergency, so he will be here tonight. Here comes the first item on the work that they did outside on page four, review of the technical assistance.
Twenty-seven, twenty-three meeting minutes. Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Mayor Protemp?
I didn't see any issues, consent is fine.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Gallow?
Consent.
Good deal. Next item?
Alright, next item is item two, found on page twelve, discuss the FY twenty-three electrical supplies bid for warehouse dog Nick Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I refer you to where you are, electrical supply bid, just for warehouse item, taking it at fifty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and fifteen percent.
Ms. McNeil, let us through it?
Yes, sir, um, consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Gallow?
Consent.
Mayor Protemp?
Uh, I'm fine with that.
Consent?
Consent.
Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Thank you. Next item?
Alright, next item is item three, found on page seventeen, discuss the agreement for the technical assistance services with Southern Georgia, Southern Georgia Rural Commission, George Henderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This contract is for the City of Douglas and the Regional Commission, from time to time, we need them throughout the year to assist staff. Um, with technical services related to zoning requests, code enforcement, different things, this is a pay-as-you-go-as, we need them contract. Um, the prior contract we had has expired, so it's time to renew that with them again.
Good deal. Mayor Protemp?
Uh, I'm fine with it. Uh, I think Ms. Henderson and I had talked about it this morning, so yeah, I don't have a problem with it for consent.
Consent. Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Gallow?
Consent.
Good deal, thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager?
Alright, the next three items, deal in some way are related to the mobile vending and pop-up tenant and the farmers market. So we start off with item four, found on page twenty-two, discuss and conduct first reading of ordinances related to the mobile vendors, special events, farmers markets, outdoor flea markets, open air markets, and pop-up markets. Georgia?
Okay, so as the City Manager said, back in February, you all gave us consensus to come back before you to draft up what the ordinances will look like. Um, it's a bunch of pages, basically what you see, the red strikeouts, we're removing that, the blue, all the blue is new. So, um, it's before you all tonight for the first reading, and it relates to the mobile vending, which includes the food vendors, uh, the pop-up markets, the farmers market, as well as the special events and festivals.
Mr. Dern, carry it forward.
Did, um, these new ordinances y'all do that to Mr. Jackson? No, 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 this one, yeah, consent.
Uh, carry it forward, for first reading?
For the first reading?
Yeah. Even, um, even with the mobile vending, did he know about that when they come out there and stuff?
He's aware, everything, whenever he came before the commission that we agreed on for the farmers market is included in this. The main thing was the fee schedule for him, which is coming up on another item.
Okay, thank you.
Carry it forward. Mr. Dern?
Mm-hmm.
Carry it forward.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protemp?
Oh, real carry it forward, but I did get some calls, um, over the weekend, and I know Mrs. Henderson and I, we, we talked about this. Uh, but I don't see the people who were calling here tonight, but hopefully, the second reading, that will be where if they have concerns, they can come back out, right?
Yeah, they, they will have an opportunity.
Opportunity too, and basically, to sum it up, what it was, is that, um, the individuals who are not at the farmers market every week, they were concerned about having to pay a full business license, but anyway, like I said, maybe they'll be here and discuss it next time, but we'll take it forward for the first reading.
Good deal. Commissioner McNeil?
Carry it forward.
Mr. Bailey?
Carry it forward.
Mr. Gallow?
Carry it forward.
Good deal, thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager?
Next item is item five, found on page fifty-one, discuss and conduct first reading and amending the Unified Land Development Code as it relates to mobile vending. Georgia?
Basically, this agenda item is when we had the discussion with you all on where we would put the mobile vendors, and, um, you know, we talked about the town center, gateway, general commercial. That is what this, this is agenda item, the first reading tonight, it would designate where we allow the pop-up mobile vendors, um, and food vendors to go. Y'all want me to read them all for y'all?
Anyone needed to read, it's the same one.
It's on page fifty-three is the summary of it, that table. At the bottom, it's where the pop-ups will go, and the neighborhood commercial, um, general commercial, town center, gateway, mobile vendors, the same, but added the planned development and the mobile food vendors, all of that, except, remember, we're gonna allow them in industrial, health service, the industries on their lunch breaks.
Okay, we have to carry it at four for the first read?
Yes, sir.
Um, Commissioner Dern?
Carry it forward.
Mayor Protemp?
Uh, I agree with you, carry it forward.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Carry it forward.
Mr. Gallow?
Carry it forward.
Good deal. Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is item six, found on page fifty-nine, discuss the schedule of fees for the Community Development Department of Georgia.
Um, we're required, um, in our code, um, to update, anytime we change fees, it should be updated in our ordinances. So there are some things associated with the mobile vendors and all, um, on page sixty. Um, you know, if we set the fee for the farmers market, the one hundred plus the three hundred regulatory fee, everyone else is basically the same, except the pop-ups and special events, theirs is the one hundred license plus the two hundred regulatory fee. Everyone else will pay a standard, uh, business license, is what we discussed, but we also have in here, remember where y'all approved for us to, um, change for the Historic Preservation Commission, the Certificate of Appropriateness, uh, whenever people make changes, modifications to homes in the historic district, we need to come and adopt that in the fee table as well, so just cleaning that up.
Okay. Mayor Protemp?
Uh, yes, again, uh, Ms. Henderson and I have talked about this, and, uh, I told her that based on having no one to actually, uh, everyone she spoke with said that they were in agreement with it, and we've talked about it, so, uh, I'm fine with it.
Consent?
Yes.
Mr. Dern?
Okay, with the special events fee, so if they have like something at Roundtree Park, how much would they have to pay for a license?
Three hundred total, but then, they don't, the vendors who participate in their event will not have to come to us for a license?
No, I'm saying, say like, for example, that you're hosting something.
If you're hosting stuff, it doesn't involve vendors, then it's the regular fee.
Okay, so they won't have to pay for a license another day if they're not having vendors?
Depending on what it is.
Because you already pay a fee with parks and recreation, for the shelters?
Right, if it's, if they're leasing the park, like the Pocket Park, um, some of them have leased Roundtree Center, some, someone used, I think Wheeler Park at one time, they pay that park fee, but if it's a business, they will have to get a business license.
Okay, okay.
And if they, if they're organizing different special events.
Okay, say like, for example, for like, uh, Easter egg hunts and something dealing with the community.
No, they just go through the special events process and lease the park.
Okay.
Okay, consent?
Take it forward.
Consent? Ms. McNeil? Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Gallow?
Consent.
Good deal, thank you. Next item?
Alright, next item is item seven, found on page sixty-one, discuss approval for KM Ventures LLC proposal for the City of Douglas GIC Housing Team Support Letter for a low-income housing tax credit application. Georgia?
We are required, um, first of all, we have a Douglas, uh, GIC Housing Team, as y'all know, we're a GIC certified alumni community, and we keep a committee going, and we discuss initiatives and ways to address housing and different needs in the community. Um, every so often, because since I've been Community Development Director, it's the first time, we have had developers to reach out to us to seek that letter that the City of Douglas Housing Team can give them to help them get additional points, up to two points, on the application that they made to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Um, with that being said, we opened up the process, uh, we received two proposals, and we had a team to score the proposals, um, the one that scored the highest was KM Ventures, they're out of Valdosta. Um, they're proposing to build sixty-four units, it's in your packet, um, on the south end of town, over, I guess you'd say, kinda close to, not almost the Hollywood subdivision, but between there, in that area, Next Event Drive. Um, and whenever Mr. Caris talk, I'll introduce him in a second, but it'd be located on thirteen acres, and, um, like I said, that is the one that the housing team is proposing. We're required to bring this before you all, because the Mayor Commission, we need to have a public hearing, in case any of the citizens wanna come out and have any comments about this, as well as give you all a chance to ask KM Ventures any questions you may have about the housing that they're proposing, and then at the March twenty-seventh meeting, we'll bring that back to you for formal endorsement and approval of what the housing team is recommending, and we'll have the letters, um, of approval in that packet as well, at the next meeting. So here tonight, in case y'all do have questions, we have Mr. Mark Caris, who is right here behind me, he's with KM Ventures, and they have developed before, they have some nice facilities over in Adel, but, um, if you all need us to pull him up on the screen, we'll be glad to do that, so you can see what he's proposing, or if you have any questions for him, or further questions for me at this time.
I'd like to see him on the screen.
You wanna hear? Okay, let me, I'm gonna have him walk back here.
But this is just informational, this is not actionable tonight.
Right.
It is, it's information, you should all hold on it tonight, and the pictures are what I'm gonna pull up, because we didn't know we would have all the visuals ready tonight.
Okay.
It's also in your packet, and Mark, I don't know if you wanna go to the podium and describe, um, what you're presenting, and how's he go?
Sure, sure.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission Members, my name is Mark Caris, and I'm from Valdosta, I'm an affordable housing developer, um, and I am planning to submit an application to Georgia DCA later on in May, uh, for this development, and as Georgia said, we are applying or requesting a GIC team support letter that goes into our application that provides some additional points for our application to, you know, help us make it more competitive, and so it's very, very important that we, uh, that we work with Georgia and, and, um, work with you guys to get this done, but, um, as she said, I am, I actually turned it in with, with actually two sites, and so if you read the packet, you have the packet of the application, I believe, but, uh, the site that she's showing there is, is the site that's off of South Gaskin Avenue, and, uh, again, we are proposing sixty-four total family units there, um, there's a site conceptual plan, it's just conceptual at this point there, that you can see, she's going through the, uh, the site location, kinda where it is, but it's on South Gaskin, if you're, I don't know if all of y'all are familiar exactly where it is, but if you go past the Lowes, you know, on Gaskin, past Lowes and Walmart, on down there, it's on the, it's on the left as you're going down South Gaskin Avenue, before you come to, what's that road you run into, I can't remember the name of that road?
Pine Crest.
Pine Crest, that's correct, so it's just there, just, uh, there's, uh, some open field, there's kind of an open field there, that, that's thirteen acres, and that's what, uh, you know, that's what we're planning to use. Um, again, there's an additional site there that we had submitted in our proposal that, um, is there, and it was something that we were also still looking at, potentially, to use, that possibly might get some additional points. Um, but, uh, the one that I know that Georgia is, uh, discussing tonight, and the one that we're talking about, is the one that's on South Gaskin. Whether we used either side, the development would be the same, it would be sixty-four units of, of, for families, working families, and, um, you've got, there's some pictures in there, and that's really what I wanted you to take a look at. Those, those are photographs of a development that I did in Adel, called Bear Creek Village, and, uh, this property we're calling Gateway Landing, and it would look very, very, very similar to that, it would have the same type of design. Um, I'm kind of a crazy person about landscaping, and so, uh, there's a lot of, you know, I, I like a lot of green space, a lot of that, um, connectivity and all of the things that, uh, go into what is, what makes a nice community, uh, for the benefit of, uh, working-class folks here, um, is, is really what I like to try to do, so, um, uh, again, this, that project there is, is, is indicative of what I'm planning to do here.
Okay.
In Douglas, so, anyway, if you have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer it.
Any, uh, questions?
I do.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dern?
Um, um, it's great that y'all are interested in coming to develop housing, because we do need more housing in the City of Douglas, but my, my concern is, and my, my question is, um, when we put, when we voted to let, uh, the complex come out there, um, off of Walker, or whatever, what it's called, I don't know the name of it, Heritage Point, and also with Hunter's Run, um, the problem that I ran into with those developers are that they built some of those apartments with low-quality material, and a lot of those housing areas was faced with molding, because of low, and, uh, citizens was calling and thinking that the city could do something about it, but we couldn't do anything about it, because it was based on, you know, the contractor and what, what they, you know, built it. So that's the, that's the main concern that I have, because even at Hunter's Run, which is a part of my district too, they, a lot of the citizens, they took me in their apartments, and a lot of their, um, housing was made out of cheap material, they, they washrooms was in mold because of the cheap material, and, you know, we know, um, stuff costs, you know, it costs, you know, but still, at the same time, you have to build those apartments with quality material, and that's the only thing I have, that my concern about is, because at the end of the day, when they in there living, and then when they face with a situation, or they come up with mold and stuff like that, that's the only thing I have to say, but I'm.
Well, and, and we've had that happen, and so what, in, at Bear Creek, the same thing, the, these, these apartments are required by Georgia DCA through, through the design of them, they are very, very tightly built, and because of energy efficiency and all of that, and so what's happened over the years is that we've had to put in dehumidifiers into the unit, so what we're doing now, and we did that at Bear Creek, is that we go ahead and rough out an area for an entire in-unit dehumidifier, and so if we begin to see those problems, then we can just go in and put those dehumidifiers in. Sometimes developers will put them in upfront, uh, we chose not to do that, but they were roughed in so that we could, and, and as, and, and we have begun to see some problems, but instead of having to go in and tear things out and do all that, we've just put in those unit dehumidifiers, and it, and it has solved the problem, so that's, and that's what we'll do here, we'll either put in, it's kinda crazy that you have to put in a dehumidifier for the unit, but that's what you have to do now, basically, and, and that, and that solves that, that mildew and potentially mold problem.
We have a lot of issues, even at, um, Georgia Wood Apartments, they have issue with that, and it's the way that they build, those old apartments built, and sometimes it's hard to contact the owners of the hood, that they say they own the hood, or whatever, and it's hard for the, for the constituent, the citizen, to reach those people, or the management, because, I mean, they don't want, I just wanna see whether it be reachable, whether you be callable, whether you be, you know, to, whatever, that those citizens have problems with, because it's all about the citizens at the end of the day.
That's right.
Because if they can't live comfortably, how can we, you know, how can we make it?
That's right.
Because when you say a family is structured in apartments, some of them have three or four children in one apart, in one, you know, apartment, and so, you know, we just wanna make sure that's okay, so it may not matter to some, but it matters to me.
Yeah.
You know, so, that's all.
Anything else?
That's all.
Mayor Protemp, you have any questions?
Uh, well, I'd just like to say that I agree with what, uh, Commissioner Dern had stated, because I know we have received a lot of calls and complaints on, you know, some apartments that were already here, and so, uh, I don't know if you all, as developers, are required to put in any, any guarantees, or, or what you plan to do, in, in case we do have problems down the road, or, or, or whatever. Do you all usually operate like that, or no?
Well, now, when you say guarantees, I, I mean, you mean.
Well, if a person, what goes into the tenants, their agreement, when they agree to rent, or whatever.
Well, certainly, certainly, we, and, and, and I, I have a management company that's out of, uh, they're out of Rome, Georgia, they're very well, uh, respected and manage a lot of affordable housing communities, and so they would manage this property, they're managing the one in, in Adel for me.
Okay.
Um, but, but yes, we have a lease, and certainly we are, we are, you know, promising those folks that we're gonna maintain a safe, a safe and comfortable living space for them. Uh, again, most of the time, I mean, the mildew issue has been one of the biggest issues in the affordable housing arena, because these things have to be built so tightly, that they're, it's actually causing that problem, and that's happened over the past five, ten years, actually, and so the way that that has been solved, and that's the way that we solve it, and it solves the problem, is to put in, this is not just one of those mobile dehumidifiers you stick in a corner, these are actually, we've roughed out an area that's in-wall, and, and you put it in the wall, they cannot, the, the residents cannot access it, can't use it, can't, we maintain it, and we set it, and it drains into the drain system, so it's in the wall, and, and it solves, and it, it, it freshens the air in those units, it's fresh, and it's clean, and those things work really, really well. So that's the way that we've been able to solve that problem, for sure.
Okay, and thank you for mentioning your management company, because what would be, I think, a good idea is, once you get your complexes developed, if the city, as elected officials, or either our staff, would have access to contacting the company?
Certainly.
Yeah, because those people who called us before, I mean, I couldn't give them any information, all I could tell them was, call your, the manager right there on site, and matter of fact, this last one, Heritage Point, they didn't have a manager at the time, so we were just, you know, in the, in the blind as to who they need to contact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we wanna be try, I mean, we wanna be part of the community, we feel like we are part of the community, once we come into a community, um, and I'm there too, I'm, I'm the developer, I'll be the general partner of the, of the development, and so, so I'm accountable as well, so, you know.
And one last thing, I didn't only ask for the, um, screenshots for myself, I thought citizens might want to see them as well, because they don't, they're not privy to what we have, so that's one of the reasons why I wanted that to be shown. But I think I met you a long time ago, you came before the city about developing something, maybe fifteen years, your name is familiar?
No, no, it's, it's, I, it was, there was a long time ago.
Long time ago.
It was probably two thousand and.
I've, I've been here twenty-four years.
Eleven, something like that.
I've been here twenty-four years, I met you before, because that name is different, Caris, however it's pronounced.
Yes.
So that's why, yeah, yeah.
Good, alright.
I'm, I'm good, thank you, thank you, sir.
Any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? We're good. Mr. Gallow, you have any questions?
What's your occupancy rate over there in Adel, is that a hundred percent, or close to it?
It's, it's point nine eight, I don't know.
So we're bringing.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, so we're bringing it back to you next.
You good? Alright. Next item?
Next item is item eight, found on page ninety-one, discuss and seek approval of the temporary lease of the old Civil Earth Patrol Building at the Douglas Airport, or Douglas Airport, as you mentioned.
Yes, we have a church, Christ Life Church, they're in urgent need of a place of worship, um, what we're proposing to you all tonight, and we ran this by Air Base Preservation Commission as well, and they are in agreement with this idea that we're presenting to you all. What we're proposing is that, because they would like to try to be in the facility by this Sunday to have their first service, um, they would be just like, similar to the agreement we done with Mr. Chris Rounds, they would go in, they would fix the building up. The thing about it, they need to move in, have service, and they will fix it up, so we would do what we call a temporary lease agreement with them, where they will pay the full lease amount of the seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, we would give them ninety days, um, to make the improvements to the building, and we'll come back before you with a general contract, and we'll prorate the improvements that they put into the building over the five-year term of that contract.
Ms. McNeil?
Okay, so, this is something we're gonna decide on tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Or we're gonna be, okay. Um, I see this is actually Mr. Edwin Taylor's.
Correct.
Area of expertise, I guess we could say, he's not here tonight, so.
I don't know if it helped, I ran it by him, he was okay with it, but I know each one of you have to consider for yourself.
No, I really do appreciate that, I like to hear what the liaison commissioner says about it, so if you talk to him, uh, I certainly respect his opinion in this, and I would be in favor of it, to add it to the agenda.
Consent? Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Gallow?
Consent.
Mayor Protemp?
So, have we had any others who have asked to try to lease other, currently, I mean, I know we did the, one of the other, not, I mean churches, religious groups, has been any others?
In the airport circle?
Yes, yes, in airport circle.
This building is the last one that's not leased, because the other two, um, the one on the end, the hospital building, the old training building, you know, we just recently done that contract with Mr. Chris Rounds. Uh, the other building is occupied by Mr. Brooks for storage, so this is the only leasing option for them, and we have not had anyone else to look at that building.
To, to look at it?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, if nobody else has, uh, inquired, then I'm, I'm in agreement for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Dern?
I just have some questions.
Okay.
Okay, seven hundred and fifty dollars per month, right, okay, even with our, does this align with our rental of all buildings?
At airport circle, yes.
Okay, uh, within, within the city, because I'm saying such, such as.
Now, this is different, you mean like what's leased on the parking lot, this is different from that, um, yeah.
Can you tell me how it's different?
You all decided the fees for up there, this is based off of the average square footage out there and the fair market value for those buildings?
So seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, so that's how much a week, like one, like two something a week?
I'm gonna go that's true. I'm saying that, we have other tenants out there, and that's what we charge.
Okay, so, yeah, I thought that's what you were saying, were out there.
Yes.
That's in compliance.
And that's for five years, that agreement?
In the airport circle, because the goal is that we, uh, some years ago, when Ms. Dale was here, was rezoned for planned development, so the concept was to create like a village-type atmosphere out there, it can become a tourism hub, but with an aviation purpose, until we are full with requests from uses of people for aviation purposes, that's why we're doing the short five terms, but those contracts have out terms for ours, for us, as well as the tenants.
Okay, I just wanna, you know, get the questions out today.
And each tenant that comes out there, and there's a member, representatives from that church, Cross Life Church here tonight, we made it clear to them that we may let you in there, but if aviation-related purpose come up, we need the facility, we may have to give you X amount of days where you have to vacate the building.
That's, Dale, I see you're with you.
Okay, next item, thank you.
Alright, next item is item nine, found on page ninety-three, uh, to discuss, we have a twenty-fourteen brake line of leasing, we have a collection.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, good evening, Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
Um, as Mr. Davis stated, this is, uh, we talked about this in the retreat, we're actually gonna rehab one truck this year, rehab another truck in a new budget, and possibly buy a new truck in a new budget. So we had two options, one was to put a whole new boom assembly on this truck for a price of sixty-seven, nine, twenty-one, twenty-eight, the other was to totally rebuild the current loader assembly that's on there, it was a stupid amount of money, a hundred and five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, sixty-one cent, it just makes no sense to do that, so we're going with the sixty-seven, nine, twenty-one, twenty-eight, the only piece we will use off the existing boom. The only piece we will use off the existing boom assembly will be the grapple piece that picks up the trash, everything else will be brand new. So, that is the recommendation from Mr. Fesbren at shop and me as the director.
Alright, Mr. Bailey, please through it.
Uh, I consent, Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, it, uh, makes, uh, the most sense all the way around.
Okay, Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mayor Proton?
I spoke with, uh, Mr. Hudson about this item, and, uh, I was in agreement that that should be the better economic, economical thing to do, so I'm in favor of that for consent.
Consent, Mr. Durham?
And how long it'll be before it'll be out to rehab?
Terry, I'll let you answer that, since y'all been in contact with them.
Yeah, that's the way it's gonna be, about eight weeks.
Okay.
So, let's get hold of it, and then we can judge the route and replace it in about a week.
Okay, cause yeah, cause that's probably, probably important because we have, I mean, I, I...
We got, we got three trucks, four trucks total, we have an old spare and then three that we run, so we still have two trucks, we are actually running two trucks on the route right now. And this truck is actually already over at the shop waiting on this decision, because they had to look at it to give us these quotes, so. We told them to hold it till we let them know.
Yeah, cause I was talking with y'all, and I was talking with some of the others that, um, the, uh, vehicle maintenance, and they were telling me that if, if the other truck was a tail, we'll be, we'll be a main truck.
Yeah, we, yeah.
So, that's why I'm saying, so how long it'll be before it can get out to rehab? Cause a lot of the citizens, you know, they be wanting to live and, you know, so that's why I'm asking, but I'm...
Y'all keep them crunched.
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Durham. Next item?
Alright, next item is item ten, found on page ninety-seven, discuss the flood drive and Spring Street Sewer Rehab Quote from Southeastern Pipe, Mike?
Uh, yeah, this is the last leg of that thirty-six inch main trunk line that we have rehabbed in sections, this is the last hundred and twenty feet. Um, we've had a lot of odor complaints in this area, and we found some holes in some of the manholes, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna line completely through those manholes, so that should eliminate those odors and against this whole trunk line slip line. So, this was a budgeted project in this current budget, uh, and we do have a existing contract with Southeast Pipe, so this budget price is based off of their contract. So, the total amount's ninety thousand, twelve dollars and thirty cents.
Mr. Bailey, go to department, lead us through it.
It's long overdue, Mr. Mayor, and certainly heartily consent.
Consent, Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
I am, consent on this one.
Mayor Proton?
Uh, I would agree to consent, uh, Mr. Hudson, do we have any other areas, uh, that have odor complaints or similar concerns?
No ma'am, this will complete ninety-five percent of our trunk lines being slip line, we've worked very hard to get that done, uh, as, if we do run into some, we may look, need to look at those as candidates for that, but right now, this has our major trunk line infrastructure, this will finish that up.
Okay, thank you.
That was part of our original master plan.
Okay.
Good with consent?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Durham said he's good with consent, next item?
Alright, Mayor Council, next item is item eleven, found on page one hundred, uh, discuss and seek approval to drill two non-portable, even though it said, uh, portable and potable water wells.
And I did not write that, he wrote that. Sorry. If it's a well, it's gonna be non-portable.
Yeah.
You want me to take it? Alright, basically, a few weeks ago, Pilgrim's Pride, you know, they're building a new rendering plant out on, uh, I call it Sinkhole Road, um, they are Thompson Sinkhole, they came to us and, uh, basically, one of their, uh, equipment suppliers said it was very, uh, bad to have chlorinated water going into those pieces of equipment, so you got two options there, they can put in a very expensive system to remove chlorine, or you can, uh, do a non, non-potable well, which means you don't treat that water. They were going to ask for a variance from the ordinance for, for that purpose, Charlie and I talked to them, uh, got them convinced to let us drill the wells, which leaves the ordinance intact, does not let you guys have to get in that political world with that.
Right.
And we also can make the revenue off the, uh, pumping of the water. We have already talked to E P D, we've actually, Kevin, we turned in our application for those two wells, uh, that's about a two-month process, I really don't understand that, but that gives, that still gives us plenty of time. I, I think we've agreed to a rate with the company, so we would put this in our easement where we've got our other utilities, we would maintain that well, it will be a separate permit from our actual drinking water permit, so it'll have nothing to do with our drinking water program, but we still have to keep up withdrawal limits.
Right.
So, um, we got that working, uh, we've got a well man coming over to give us some firm quotes, we're looking probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those two wells, Charlie and I have looked at the numbers, we think our rate can capture that. Three years, didn't we decide, three years?
About three and a half years.
So, three, three and a half years payback, and then we'll be pure profit, uh, won't be a lot of upkeep, this basically daily reads is all the guys will have to do, there's no chlorine, no fluoride, so it's kind of a no-brainer, we also have a, another industry that may be in the same situation, so this, this gets us where we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, so.
Right.
But the recommendation is to, to go forward with whatever we need to do to get this done.
Mr. Bailey?
As, uh, Mr. Hudson said, it's kind of a no-brainer, I consent.
Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mayor Proton?
I'm fine with consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next item?
Alright, Mayor Council, next item is item twelve, found on page one oh six, uh, this is, uh, discussing the S B A cell tower land lease renewal, um, everybody knew our first cell tower on the west side of town where that two one-way streets come together, it's rather by the old, years ago, it was called Pig Wiggly, um, but, uh, where Harvey's in, the new cell tower in the middle of town, it's coming up on its, uh, five-year renewal, and so, we've been, uh, working with them and going through some negotiations, and so, um, the negotiations yielded, there was another twenty-five year extension and five year term, we get a one hundred thousand dollar signing bonus, uh, we'll increase the rent from twelve thousand, uh, dollars, uh, a year to twenty-four thousand dollars a year, so we're doubling the rent, we get a thirty percent revenue sharing when you carry installs on that, uh, power, and we get a three point two five annual escalation in that, and so, we're here tonight to ask Mayor Council to authorize the mayor signing any documents, uh, for this renewal.
Alright, um, city manager and I have discussed this, they said doubling the rent, getting thirty percent on this and all type of stuff, it's just money, money, money coming into the city, uh, although it's a small amount, but it's an easy, and again, a no-brainer, so I would say for the consent, let's start with Mr. Galloway.
What three carriers are on there right now?
I don't, I don't have a name of the carrier, I knew pride was one of them, I think T-Mobile was out there first, I guess.
If y'all put A T T on there, I'll look for it. Yes. When we had, when the thing went down, we had no service at my house, and I had to call A T and T, and they said that was their closest tower, and they were reading, they kept telling me. Y'all don't know, I mean, we, we don't know who's, who's, who's got the service on there? They didn't tell us that?
No, I mean, I don't.
You're right, I missed it. You can pass it.
Say again?
You can go to somebody else.
Okay.
I'll think about it.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Um, in lieu of the, uh, you know, like you say, the financial structure here, what we have in place as far as, uh, an investment, I'd say consent.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Uh, I'm fine with consent with it.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Thank you, back to you, Mr. Galloway.
Anything good for it for now?
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Alright, next item is item thirteen, found on page one oh nine, discuss and seek approval of the E V charging station quick lane and license, um, up at the tax allocation district, um, been the final road of cleaning up all the agreements and stuff, you know, you know, we put in through the, uh, City of Douglas and, and, and Rangers, um, that we had up there, we put in a, uh, E V charging station, they're now ready to be added over to us, and we also have entered into a one dollar a year, uh, land lease for that, uh, for that, um, E V charger sitting on that land, and, uh, so we're here tonight to seek approval to, um, um, finish up that, uh, of those deeds and licenses.
Mayor Proton, what, the water service sucks?
Uh, yes, I'm fine with that, to, uh, approve that, yes, I'm saying.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
I'm sorry, we're still talking about cell towers, so.
Thank you.
Yes, um, this is the charging stations, yes.
Consent? Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Galloway?
Consent.
Good deal. Is that it? Any, uh, any general comments?
No, sir.
Uh, so we're good?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we're gonna take a quick pause and we will reconvene for the regular meeting. Alright, all hearts and minds clear? Let's, let's do what Mr. Rople say, let's do the City of Douglas's business. Alright, here we go. You ready, old Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Good? Mr. Galloway?
Ready.
Mr. Bailey? Ms. McNeil? Mayor Proton?
I'm ready.
Mr. Durham?
Ready.
Good deal. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor Commission, this will serve as our regular meeting, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Willie Carter, pastor of the Move of God Deliverance Center. Mr. Pastor?
Amen.
Amen, that is by his. Father, we thank you tonight.
Yes.
God, for all things being well. Father, we lift up our hands and God, we say thank you.
Thank you.
For the good times, God, we say thank you.
Thank you.
God, we say thank you for all of the low times.
Yes.
And now, Lord, as we move into this new building, into this new season, God, we ask you to fit us with faith, to be able to handle every situation.
Yes, Father.
Bless now, God, them as they go forth, God. Asking for direction, asking for wisdom. Oh, God, I thank you now that they are blessed.
Yes, Father.
We ask that you strengthen our minds and our bodies.
Yes, Father.
We ask that you keep us in all of our ways.
Yes.
Let us be shoulders for each other to lean on and to stand by. God, these things we ask in the name of Jesus. Bless us now, be free. Let every heart say amen.
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 Amen. Thank you, thank you, Lord. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please, uh, stand, face the flag, we're gonna be led at the Pledge of Allegiance by the Coffee High Navy Junior R O T C. Tonight, we have Lieutenant Carrillo, Carrillo and Petty Officer Second Class Hernandez to lead us through.
Present. Art. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the brotherly for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Art. Pledge. Basic. For where? Mark. Right. Right. Right.
You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
Some move.
Second.
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda items, as always, the city manager will lead us through this by telling us, or telling the citizens all the items that were placed on the consent agenda for transparency. Mr. City Manager, please lead, please lead us through it.
Mayor Council, we have ten items coming over tonight on the consent agenda, and I stated I will read them all. First item, item is approval of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, next is approval of the F Y twenty-three electrical supply bill for warehouse stock, next item is approval of agreement for the technical assistance, uh, services with Southern Georgia Regional Commission, next item is approval of scheduled fees for the Community Development Department, the next item is approval of the temporary lease of the old Civil Air Patrol Building, building at the Douglas Air Base, next item is the, uh, approval of the rehab of the twenty-fourteen brake liner leasing limb truck, the next item is approval of the flood drive and Spring Street Sewer Rehab Quote from Southeastern Pipe, next item is approval of, um, process to drill two non-portable water wells with approved rates, um, um, for the Pilgrim Pride, next is approval of S B A cell tower land lease renewal, and the last item is approval of E V charging station quick lane and licensing agreement.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, at this time, I entertain a motion for the item. It's been motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mm-hmm.
Next item is work session items for discussion or question, Mr. City Manager, I, I believe we have a couple?
Mayor Council, we have three items, um, being brought forward, two of them are first reading of ordinances, and one will be a public hearing, the first item is item four coming over from the work session on found on page twenty-two, that was the first reading of ordinances relating to the mobile vendors, special events, farmer's market, outdoor flea market, open air markets, and pop-up markets.
Okay, this will be the first read, this is a twenty-six page order, I won't read the whole thing.
Thank you.
This will be an order submitted to the City of Douglas, chapter ten, business articles, six, feathers, solicitors, section ten, two eleven, adding article eight, mobile food vendors, section ten, two thirty-two, through ten, two forty-one, adding article nine, outdoor open air markets, section ten, two three, three, through ten, two twenty, and adding article ten, farmer's market, section ten, two eleven, through ten, three thirteen, to amend and repeal all the other ordinances in conflict here with the viability of safety state and other purposes, often read for the first time in the regular meeting of Mayor Board Commission of City of Douglas, Georgia on March thirteenth, read for the second time in passing, and then, 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 Mayor Board Commission of City of Douglas, Georgia, that's properly advertised as action, add a prior to the charge of City of Douglas, Georgia on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at this time, you will take action.
Okay.
Alright, next item is item five, uh, appropriate, uh, conduct first reading amending, amending the Unified Land Development Code as it relates to mobile vending.
Alright, first one looks at food truck orders, the second is where you park food vessels. This will be an order submitted to the City of Douglas Code, ordinances, so, part B, construction land use and land development, Unified Land Development Code, Article seven, chapter three, one eleven, supplemental standard section one eleven dash seven three, table for permitted use of section one eleven, two sixty-nine, mobile vendors, by adding the section one eleven, two sixty-nine, and adding section one eleven, two sixty-nine point one, and amending section one eleven, three, two, temporary uses, including special events and structures to regulate mobile vendors and mobile food vendors to provide for an effective date for other purposes, often read for the first time in the regular meeting of Mayor Board Commission of City of Douglas, Georgia on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and read for the second time in passing, and then, the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, that's properly advertised as cashing requirement in charge of City of Douglas, Georgia on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and this is ready for action.
Good deal. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
It's been motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?